Good, okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the town council work session on Wednesday, July 23rd at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum of council here, so we can conduct business. Let the record also show that we have Town Administrator Aiken, Town Clerk Hurd, and we also have Public Works Director Edwards and Town Building Official Kazir. So, first item of business on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
A motion that we approve the agenda.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilman Bitter. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Toulson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Just a moment. Alrighty, moving on. Okay, the first item of business on the agenda under discussion items is the administrators' update. So Administrator Aiken, what do you have for us this evening?
So, I'd like to introduce Jacob Pepper. He's our summertime special municipal officer.
Jacob.
He's retired law enforcement officer, I think 28 years experience, and he's been awesome from his first day. He was taking care of business, very good at that, and he's made a major impact. He's been through a lot of things on the list that we haven't addressed in a while, so we're grateful to have him. If anybody has any questions for him, he's active.
Thank you, Jacob. We're really happy to have you. So, appreciate it.
And, so it came up, and there were some, you know, quote unquote, about Silver Star the progress and water lines. So, I just want to clarify a few things. Silver Stars only hit two of our water lines in this whole process. One of them was on Cedar Drive about a month ago, and it was a service line. It was boring under the road, and the line had a little snake in it. It was marked, but they just clipped the edge of the line. They helped us fix that. They did about 50% of the work. They were running coal with us, shovels and whatnot, fixing that. And they did hit a line in the Elkhorn area. It's not part of the town, but it is our water line, and they fixed that entire thing without any assistance from us. Other than that, they haven't had any, any issues with our lines. Our lines are roughly six feet deep. They're ripper, laying the fiber, and it goes down 36 to 40 some odd inches. So, our line's pretty protected from that. There have been significant issues with other water lines, with HOA or with leisure valley that are not as deep as ours. They've had, there've been breaks in their lines, so some of what the public may have seen are not our lines, and not all of those issues were related to Silver Star either. But we don't have the two questions.
Yeah, what are the pits that their Silver Stars digging along the muddy stream on the east side?
Um, I think, I think we're talking about boring there, where they're boring under the road there instead of digging.
They've dug six-foot-deep pits with ladders in, in at least three spots.
Zach, could you?
It's called drop boxes. It's for future, Bob.
Okay.
They kind of be.
Future, yeah.
Yep.
Any questions about water lines or any of that? We don't have the two. So, just moving on here, there's a number of good telling stories with someone who helped me in my prior career and who's helped me in this, told me I need to get better at that, so I'll give it a shot here. But for something I want to present, we're pretty excited about it. Zach's worked really hard on this, but just to start off, I've had type 1 diabetes since I was seven years old. And the reason why that's significant to what I'm going to tell you, in 1921, there were a couple of gentlemen, Sir Frederick Banting, Charles Best, and J.J.R. McFloyd discovered insulin, okay? Keeps me alive, right? But the thing about insulin, it doesn't cure my disease, it only treats the symptoms. So, what we've been doing with our roads just treats the symptoms. And what we're looking at would take us 44 years under our current plan to pave the roads here. So, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm going to die of old age before that happens. So, I've, I've been looking at ways, and Zach's been looking at ways, that we can pave our roads much faster, and we've looked at everything we can. We looked at the cost of purchasing equipment to do asphalt, and it's not feasible for us. It's too big of a purchase, and the maintenance and everything there is not feasible for us to do. The reason we haven't done this in the past is because we, we didn't have personnel to do this, but now we do. And if we remember, what we estimate, that just a thousand feet on Vista is going to cost $1.2 million if we just bid the whole project out. Zach was able to come up with numbers, and we have the personnel to do it. We're going to do the dirt work there, and we've got a track over in it, and it's going to be here on Monday. So, I encourage everyone to come down when you have a chance in the next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if you can, and see our guys do that. Dig that out. There's going to be some traffic delays and things. We've sent out notices, and we continue to. But that probably cut off close to half a million dollars off of that project. We have to dig 24 inches down, pack that into the road base. But still, that's not quite enough to get the roads done, even if we do a lot of the dirt work. So, we kept looking, and Zach's done an excellent job finding ways that maybe we can do this better. So, we've set aside just a little over a million dollars to do this, and to chip seal plat 5, the rest of that, and plat 21. So, what I would like the council to consider, and Zach's got the numbers here, and I've got photos and everything, he can answer any questions, but we have the personnel that will be able to do that part of the job as well. We have a lot of the equipment already. We have two dump trucks. So, we would be able to do the chip seal and do it at a fractional cost of what we could bid that out for. Part of the problem we're having here is we're almost up to 30 residences here for this year, for single-family residents.
New ones, yeah.
So, if you have a roadway, the water line goes on one side, someone builds on the other side of the road, we're going to have to dig across the road to put in the meter bit. So, then we have a six-foot path where you have pavement, back to rock, pavement. We're not, we don't have a good plan to maintain that, to fix that right now. And then we're running into constant problems like on Frader Circle, Frader down here. I wasn't aware, but as part of the 2023 water project, that was bid out to save costs of that road, they will not be put back to chip seal. So, that's kind of kicking the teeth for all of us. We do have problems with other roads that haven't been maintained. We have to have a plan to maintain what's out there and to pave the roads. So, Zach's gone through, not the cost, it would roughly cost us about $120,000, we'll kind of guess on the high end there. We would need a tar truck. Zach's found one that's been redone for $60,000. We would need a couple of tailgate spreaders for the dump trucks we have. They're roughly going to be just over $10,000 each. That'd be about $20,850 for those two. It's relatively cheap to buy the tar and to buy the chips. Our guys have built miles and miles of road in their careers. We have a roller. We'd have to put a water tank on it to keep it wet. But total equipment cost of what we need, we need a broom to, to brush off the roads and things. We've been in at roughly $120,000 to purchase the equipment. And then, with Zach's estimates here, to do three inches of chip seal on Vista, which we could do now, and that's the whole roadway, including the pathway, it'd be 32 feet, Zach?
Yes.
So, that would be a passway and everything. We could do that for $29,900 and have it done.
Before winter.
Yeah, before winter, and do the other two plats and still be hundreds of thousands of dollars ahead. What that would do in the future is we would have the equipment. There's some minimal irritations there. We need to, we need to kind of weatherproof one of our bays down the shop. The tar truck has to stay in there, stay warm all winter. We can handle that. But having the equipment, I don't have a cost, you know, we're a million dollars a mile an hour right now with what we're doing. It's not okay. And this would be a fraction of that cost. Chip seal and maintain chip seal what we have. So, I would really strongly encourage the council to consider, we've already allocated this money. We can get all those projects done in-house. We can cure the disease easier, not just treat the symptoms. So, that's the pitch that I would like to make to the council. Zach's here to answer any of the important questions here, but you know what you want to know.
Okay. Counsel, thoughts, questions?
Would we not pave Vista in the future? That would take out paving altogether?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we going to just chip seal and then pave in the future?
So, chip, chip seal is roughly asphalt and chip seal. The difference is, you've got a lot of tar in the asphalt. But what we would do is, we would, we would chip seal that thousand feet there, and then we would do maintenance layers as needed. We are purchasing, we put in the budget to purchase a software program to help us with the maintenance schedule for our roads. But we would get that done now and be able to maintain that and other roads and pave more. So, part of the concern on Vista is our line, HOA, leisure valleys all running down that road. If we do asphalt, someone's going to have a break here, whether it's us or anybody else. We're going to have to do maintenance there, and when you dig up asphalt, it's very costly to repair. And we're going to have to be digging it. I don't want to say it regularly, but it's going to happen. As we build out more too, we're going to have to catch through that and have to come up with a way to just repair the asphalt there as well.
Let me ask a quick question for you. Total in the budget for Vista and all three of them is how much?
So, it's, I believe it was $220 for plat 5, $200,000 for plat 21, and $4,000 for 6. So, we're, we're just over a million dollars, like a million twenty thousand or somewhere.
Total to do all, all authorizations were six, $220, and $200, so a million twenty.
Now, in, or if we were to buy the equipment and the material to do it, what would our total cost be?
So, we're $120,000 for the equipment.
Okay.
Chips are $30 a ton. And there, there's a couple of options we have actually for, for tar. Zach's figured out, we could rent a tar tank and have someone out of Boise fill it, and then you have $6,000 yam in tier. We'd do that for a couple of months a year when we do projects, or we could just get tar here in the valley. So, it fluctuates a little bit there, but.
Go ahead. Use a high number.
$30,000 to do three inches of chip on this. So, Zach, what's your estimate total cost for all three of these projects?
Thousand, is it?
I, I don't know. There's that footage of, you know, four or five, I don't have my head, but, like, we're doing a thousand for those stuff for $30,000, so I don't know. I mean, I have to, I don't have a measure.
So, okay, but even, even if you double that?
Let's just say a hundred.
Yeah.
And we have 600 in the budget.
Well, just for that one road.
Just for that.
But then even also do the other two.
That's what I meant, like, just for, yeah.
Do you think we do that around $400,000 for everything?
Those three?
Way above that.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. But go conservative and say.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Even if it was half?
Yeah, I'm coming to saying, we could do all three of these projects for half of what we budget.
And maintain what we already got.
Now.
Get the maintenance.
I'm a risk.
For our, our, our roads that we've already got. We can do, we can do maintenance layers, you know. And that's what it is. It's discussed. I mean, it's, we own the equipment. We can maintain it wherever we need to, you know.
But I'm a risk averse type of person.
Yep.
And I want to make sure, okay, what are the worst scenario or things that could happen that could cause us to still spend a million or even more?
So, the, we've worked through some of the biggest concerns we have. One of the ones is that, you know, Avell is kind of dug up with a cannon or strawberry pit. They did a new lease for a 20-year lease.
Yeah.
For a new piece of property. There's going to be plenty of rock to get. West Hills Construction just got a lease as well. They're not doing chips quite yet, but they just started, and they're going to. So, the materials available, worst-case scenario for me, the worst here I have is that we lose the employees that we have that come in as a terrain. So, that is, that's the concern I have right there.
Okay.
So, yeah, without the people, you can't do it, you know.
And the other?
I guess what, the paving versus chip seal, we went rounds about this during the budget process. So, now, why are we coming back to chip seal? Like, is it, is the intent to chip seal every road on this ranch and have no asphalt in the future?
Um, well, we will, that's a consideration for the council to, to decide, but what we would do is, we would follow our 2018 road plan, and the reason why chip seal was not a good idea in the past is because we were bidding it out. We were paying other people. We're paying their salaries, their equipment use, their fuel use, and maintaining their businesses. So, we're paying this much money when we could do it for this. If we maintain the chip seal, it, we won't have problems like we've had in the past. We can do maintenance layers in, in a very short amount of time. But this pays off exponentially in the ease of snow plowing, the lack of dust. We won't need dust guard. We won't need to run the grader all the time in the summer, fill the puddles that start eroding the very day you fill them. So, the problem with chip seals, you have to maintain it. We are purchasing the software program to put on a list of maintenance schedule, but.
And we have the employees, like, clearly our employees are busy already to add this to their plate. It can happen?
Absolutely, and this will eventually become less work for them.
Replace the work.
It's a trade-off. They're going to give up some jobs to take care of this. The key to longevity of chip seal is the base.
Yeah.
And that's the key piece.
Yeah, some of our roads were not going to be. Take Ridge Crest for example. What it looks like, they, you know, Ernie, they used to work here, and Dustin from Avell called me down there and said, "You got to see this." So, I went down there. There's five feet of clay into the road, and it looks like they just ran the truck down the middle and spread it out. So, you've got this much chip seal in the middle, and you've got this much on the edges. That's not a proper way to build a road, but that's what happened in the beginning. And we, we could do a better job than that, and we can maintain the road better than that with the people we have and if we have this equipment.
So, if we chip seal Vista in 2025, when will it need to be redone?
Um, I think it's five years, Zach. It's three or five. So, it does depend a little on how it wears. If our road is busier, we'll be there sooner than others.
That's the thing. We have the equipment. We can do it if we have the time we want to. We don't have to put nothing up to bid. We don't have, it's that and the other. It's already got here. And if it ain't a five year, it works down, we do it three years. That's fine. You get to what we want, you know.
What's your most expensive piece of equipment?
At least, it's the, 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 the Patrick.
And, and that's how much?
Sixty thousand.
So, if we had to replace that because something goes wrong with it, it's not as, I mean, again, you're making it up in what you would give somebody else in profit margin.
That, that's, that's true. I mean, I've got, I've got all the information right there for it. It's a company out of Florida. I've been negotiating with them and everything. It's completely redone from one end to the other. It's a Ford Sterling, it's an old seven model, but you can look at the pictures of it. They, they guarantee everything on it. And I can show them, I can tell you what a 2021, in the process, $340,000 for the side truck.
That's cleaner than my truck.
Yeah, well.
That's pretty nice for a 2007.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the other thing probably ought to be aware of is, the chip sealed road that I'm aware of is Choke Cherry up on the north end. When they resealed that, because it's been redone once, it was pulled off in one day. And it's what, about a mile long?
So, for the, for the council, if this is something we wanted to move forward with, I think we'd have to do a, I think we'd have to do a budget amendment.
So, I talked to Wade Hershey, who had.
Who's our accountant was here today, yes.
Yeah. And he said that, as long as, so, no, we don't have to do a budget amendment. I'm not comfortable making the decision, but as long as the council agrees with it, you don't, you don't have to do an amendment. I just have to stay within the budget, and if anything else, say we, we spent $500,000, and we want to do some of that other money to do another road, this group would just have to say, "Yeah, we're fine if you do this road."
What we could do is just, yeah, at that point in time.
I think a budget amendment should be necessary so that that money isn't just sitting there.
It's fine.
So, if we don't do a budget amendment, I think the other part is, we have to vote on any other amounts that are used.
Yeah.
We don't run into that issue.
Either way, we could do that, right?
So, the, per our accountant, we, a budget amendment is only necessary when you, if you take money out of an account and then go somewhere else for, if a project that wasn't allocated for. This money is already approved to do these two projects.
Roads to roads.
Yeah. And it's these specific roads that we would need to start with, otherwise it would, so with the leftover money.
I think my concern is that the money is spent without the council actually voting on it or approving it. So, that's why I don't want it just sitting there to be spent. I agree, we have to spend on roads, but if we just made a budget for all that money that doesn't need to be, I don't think it needs to be sitting there encumbered by something that we're not spending it on.
Are you referring to the excess, or?
I'm referring to the excess. And it's easy to be like, I'm trying, but I don't know.
That would be a budget amendment, once we find out.
Right.
What it is. Unless we go to other roads.
Yeah, it, yes.
Well, exactly, but we should vote on that as well.
Yes, exactly. The council would need to approve anything additional. We've, we've put that money to do Vista, plat 5, plat 21. As long as we do that, it doesn't matter. We didn't, you know, we can't specify who wins a bid or anything. It's just, this money is for these projects. If there's leftover money, the council would need to vote for that road or this road or.
Well, that's what I'm saying. In the past, that hasn't happened, so I'm just concerned that we don't have any rules up and around that yet. And so, I don't want it to just sit there and then be spent without.
No, it can't be spent on other things with.
Well, it can on roads, though, until, but if the road, that's what I'm saying. It's already been encumbered for that, like.
Could we lay it out in a, you know, sort of a little mini-plan and a resolution or something like that?
You have a road plan. This is, who's your highest priority?
No, I know, but just for the money that's currently budgeted for these three projects.
For purposes of clarity.
Yes, for purposes of clarity, we're going to do this, and that might result in $300,000 being left over, right? If it all works great. And then, you know, what we would do with that $300,000, just leave it in the road reserve or earmark it to try and do, I don't know, some more roads.
Additional.
This fiscal year.
That'd be.
But I think that's what we could discuss.
Yeah.
So, back to your story, because I'm really excited about this story you told us. The 44 years, obviously, is a couple. What does this kind of do to our long-term plan? I know you guys have thought about it, and you can be conservative again.
Um, so, there are a couple people who threaten suing for paper roads. Just keep that in mind, because they, I bought a house on a dirt road, and it, you know, that's my cabin.
That's okay. Have them come talk to you.
Yeah. Um, I, conservatively, Zach, I can think 15 years here, we could probably figure out almost every road here.
Cola Sacks included?
Yeah. Cola Sacks would probably last, but yeah, and it, it takes us to, I think, 15 years to breed.
I think you would have 70% of the ranch extremely happy.
Well, I hope like it.
Or more.
I don't know if I'd even make 7% happy with anything, but it's.
So, what would that, having more chip sealed roads do as far as winter plowing? Is that going to be helpful?
Very.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lot less time.
Yeah. Well, it would help all the repairs from the dirt, from the gravel roads, once spring comes. But we was.
Ripping stuff off, yeah.
We was a couple of months of just fixing, running out roads, you know.
That's where you get.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, what's our?
So, I think, I mean, I think it sounds very, very promising. I don't know that we're prepared to vote on anything right this minute.
So, document it?
Can we document it, get it ready for the next work session or, or regular meeting? Go ahead.
Just remember, trucks like that ain't going to stay on market. That's more than just us looking for, and I'm not the same trucks, equipment altogether. This was a '74 truck I looked at, and when I haul them back, they're like, they're already gone. I'm not trying to rush the council, but, I mean, whatever, but I don't want to prolong something, then we miss a deal. This has already happened in the past, and then we have to take some second guess. The, the summer months is late. We're not going to be able to get it done. We don't start like through December.
Right, yeah.
Where is the truck at?
It's in Florida, and that, that includes, it's fifty-five hundred bucks of shipping. So, the 120 would include shipping. We're not going to.
So, you're asking us to approve $60,000 tonight to get this truck going?
No, so, I think, maybe I wouldn't explain this well, but.
I mean, like, so that we don't lose the deal.
We put a million dollars to do these three projects. We don't specify how that money gets spent to do them. If we, if we get those three projects done and stay within budget, the councils, the state don't have a problem with how we spend that money.
So, can we authorize it tonight to move forward with this part of the plan and then document it for everybody's sake for the, the next town council? Is that?
Will the, the council be willing to do that this evening?
So, are you, so for you, this is the total. Troubleshooting and everything is what you're thinking is 120? I know there's more money in the account, but I'm trying to really get it more accurate.
One, one's money for the equipment we need.
Okay. And then the chip seal Vista this year too?
That will, that's thirty, thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, okay.
Point nine nine.
Okay.
Um, and the, if we, because our current plan is to put these out for bid September, October for spring. So, if we do that, we will need to do maintenance in the spring, because driving and plowing, all that stuff's going to, it's going to bump up a little bit. And it's not a ton of maintenance, but we will need to do maintenance. Um, this, I don't see that we'll probably get any of this done this fall, and if we bid it.
Um, as far as the 24 inches to put down on Vista, is every place that we chip seal going to be 24 inches that suspect the thing, or is it going to be?
Can't answer that, but we look at each road. Um, there's some.
Okay.
Brand, whether you're going to have that. Um, Zach could maybe give you a better estimate, but we'd have to look at each road.
And is that costly, the, the foundation part? Is that?
If we bid it out, it was going to be $600,000 just for that. We're doing it for under, under $100,000, Zach?
Yes.
And that includes renting trackhoe, renting trucks to haul it off.
And that's 24 inches down?
Twenty-four inches. So, we've already got that rock stocked at, at the shop, and that project starts Monday, the excavation part.
I think it would be in our best interest if we're going to do, move forward with this, if everybody's on board with it, to go ahead and vote this forward for then.
For the purchase of that vehicle.
If everybody else is hopeful.
I'm comfortable with it.
I am too.
I just want everybody to be. I don't know, what is this piece of equipment here? Someone needs to.
That's the, that's the truck that puts the oil in there.
No, no, so, I think the.
That's the one that's the urgent piece right there.
We would need a motion then to authorize the procurement of a 2007 Ford Sterling for $60,000.
I wouldn't move the motion.
Dollars. Is everyone comfortable with that? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pidoo. I'm going to go buy a, what is this kind of truck?
Tank truck.
The oil, the tank truck?
Tank truck.
Okay. I didn't know what the technical name of it was. Okay.
I hope, I hope these words spread like wildfire, that, you know, there's, there's some good things happening.
Did you do the second on that? Sorry, wasn't.
I hope, I hope so.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Alright.
I'm just excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Now, thank you for, I mean, thinking out of the box and finding ways that we can get after the roads. I mean, I know it's been many, many years of water, and it's still not done yet with the water, and the roads have just kind of been sitting. So, it'd be nice to make some progress.
And that was, that was, it was, uh, the mind went of, it's over $6,000 for a load that they're all in here, and we, when we leave with our truck, you figure it's $10,000 for our truck to leave, probably works, and what I have several times a year. The, the tar, it's a little bit cheaper than that, that you won't have had to put my back down.
Wow.
So, that was one of the.
Yep.
So, in, just to tie this up, then, what we'll also do is put down on writing kind of what the plan would be, and what the, the costs are that you've got compiled with Zach, so that the council has that, and we can figure out, do we, you know, how we want to document it basically, so that we know the money that we have in the budget right now, how it's going to be used. Just want everyone to be comfortable with that, because it sounds like we're going to have, knock on wood, money left over, which would be nice. So, okay, and so we'll get that out to the council. Alrighty. Okay, what else you got, Chimer?
That's all for tonight.
Okay, is there anything else for Town Administrator Aiken from the council? Okay. Thank you. Alright, moving on. The next item on the agenda, we've been asked a couple of times, so finally got it on the work session agenda here about an idea to the work session agenda here about an idea to, um, form a public works board in lieu of separate roads boards and water utility boards, so I just wanted to bring that up for the council to have a discussion about that. So, um, I think it's been, well, it's come out of the roads board initially. I know the water board, I believe, is aware of it also. I don't know how thoroughly it's been discussed with the water utility board, but I, I wanted to get the council's thoughts and opinions, so. Questions, comments?
Well, can somebody give us some insiders to, you know, what's been the issues that would say that this is a better plan? Or a better proposal?
I might have to speak on that to somebody, I'm sure Taylor can too, since he's been on the water board. So, there's a lot of, I mean, we have public works that looks over water and roads, and it's kind of the same idea with having a board that would do that, um, because they definitely coincide, um, they work on separate things, but the last meeting we had for the road board, we were discussing like, um, how the roads are turned up for water lines, like Trevor had mentioned, and like the cost and everything, and that would've been good to like bounce off the water board, and I think that we can come to a conclusion, and like something to actually recommend to the council, um, if they were, you know, combined. There's been a couple times where, you know, quorums for both sides was a struggle, and this kind of gives us more people to, and for subcommittees as well, we need other things to branch off on and, and help research for the council.
Because there's distinct expertise both in water and roads, right?
Thing. What was that?
Expertise, there's distinct expertise on both of those, and you just kind of.
That would be our hope, but they, it is a volunteer board, so, yeah, but yes, I mean.
Some experience.
Definitely people on the water board, we know a few of them who've been on there for a long time, or previously on there, so.
Your, your expertise between the roads and the water are totally different.
Yeah.
But there is some overlap and some coordination that needs to take place between the two. So, if there was one board, I would, I would suggest that maybe that board be split, the two different ones to come together at some point. Does that make sense? Because the water board's gonna have to deal with things that are not gonna be at all related to the roads, in some cases, but in other cases, it is gonna be related to the road.
I think also, though, having more people on the board, um, for, for a public works board, would allow for more efficiency too, because not only, hopefully they'll make a form, but also because, um, you know, they, the overlapping that happens, but also more people hearing about water and getting, you know, kind of more invested in both infrastructures, I think would be really important. And then also maybe save some time and money for public works if they're needing to come to some of our meetings and such, so.
Well, it's where we spend the vast majority of our dollars, both those, so it's, yeah.
So, the hope would be that it would be more efficient if it was combined.
So, the, I think the, I mean, the path forward could be the, a councilman or drafts a public works board ordinance? And then, I think we would need to ask the water board and the road board to, for input to that. And then ultimately, it comes back to the council, decide to move it forward, and if we did wanna do that, then we would also, at the same time, eliminate the two standalone boards, so, I mean, administratively, I think that's how it would happen. Or merge the two existing, um, codes together, however we would wanna do it, but someone would need to take that step. So, do you wanna give that up? Tackle that one, Councilman Merrill, all right?
And as far as input, input from the road board and the water board, do you just want it, like a recommendation afterwards presented to them, or?
I would, I mean, I would probably just ask them to review the draft, and then, yeah, probably give recommendations, because they might have some good input to whatever draft you have, and then I would imagine we could ask for recommendations as well, just, you know, there, I think that maybe, um, it would be a big change, and so sometimes that's, and I know we've had a water board within the town since the town has been around, so it would be a, a change, that's all. Just wanna work through that as, uh, without as much conflict as possible, if we can, so, if we end up moving it forward, so. Okay, great, well, thank you for taking on that challenge. Just making a note. All righty, any other comments or questions on that topic? All right, moving on, I, I just wanted to do one more last call for the Lincoln County Land Use Regulation overlays. Chief of Staff Steven Allen has asked for comments back by the first of August. I got a couple from Councilman Ellis and Councilman Toolson, and there's another one that got out of the planning commission last night. We don't have a lot, um, also, I was talking with Town Clerk Hurd before the meeting, that I don't think we actually send it out, asking the public for comments, um, or the association, so I think we're gonna try and send that out in an email this weekend, post the documents. I think the documents might be on the town website, but I'm not sure. Now, we'll post them, ask for any feedback, and I'll talk to Steven to see if, you know, he said one August, but maybe there's a little wiggle room in that, so we could have a little more time, but.
I did have something sent in, I was just waiting to hear back from someone from the state, but I was just asking before I suggested, so.
Okay.
If it's coming out before the first, or you're sending anything before the first, if you could just let us know.
I will, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a note to talk to Steven tomorrow.
I mean, I, I should hear back by the first, so I'm not concerned about that, but if you're sending it out before that.
Okay.
Just let me know.
You mean, sending it out?
To, like, the reply to Steven?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I was gonna wait until the first, but hopefully he'll say, he can give us a little more time.
Oh, I see.
But I'll let you know, one way or the other, about like, we have, still only have to the first, or now we've gotten to the tenth, or something like that, so. Okay. All right. Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda, uh, Green Canyon Tank Bid. So, the council should have received, um, the town engineer's recommendation on the bid we received for the Green Canyon tank lining. Um, and he recommended that we, um, award that bid, of course, that's a council's decision to make. Uh, there's, originally, my thought was we would talk about that here, see if anybody had any questions about it, and then do a motion during the regular town council meeting, which would be our next meeting, but there's some time constraints. Trevor, can you elaborate a little bit on that? I mean, we, we, we still could do it that way, however, it would be better if we could do a motion tonight about it, but if you can give the background.
Sure, so we have a short window here to do anything, when the snow's, you know, there's not piles of snow, and the bid was done, I think it was July eighth, is Ryan's letter. So, typically, companies want to see that within thirty days, so they can plan, um, and the, the company's plan is to come in and do the outside of the tank. Now, when it's hot, they won't have to shut off water or anything, just to dig a little bit of dirt, sandblast it, and do the outside, and then come back towards the end of October and do the inside when our water usage is lower, um, to be less impactful to the residents. So, getting that on their schedule is pertinent for them, because they have a lot of, you know, they're, I think they're out of Montana, they have projects going on all over the place, and they need to get some surety bonds and things like that in progress, so, um, I, I texted back and forth with our engineer today, who said it would be great if we could do it as soon as possible to get it scheduled with them, and if, if not, Ryan and I are gonna need to call tomorrow and try to work something out.
Yeah. So, it'd be, if we didn't, if we don't vote on it tonight, um, then it's gonna be three weeks before our next work session, next meeting, so.
Is this aligned with our, sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're good, as far as our budget went?
Yeah, it was five hundred thousand.
That's exactly. Yeah, it's like a big sixty dollars under.
How is that?
Amazing, isn't it?
So, um.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid.
Okay.
Will we?
Is that okay?
Can I modify your motion slightly?
Sure.
Make an amendment to Katie's motion to allow the mayor to sign off on the four hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollar, um, bid that's been accepted?
Uh, we have a motion to accept the bid for that amount?
Say whether or not you agree with that.
I agree.
All right, thank you. And could I get a second?
A second.
A second, and it's been moved by Councilman Toolson with an amendment modification by Councilman Ellis, and a second by Councilman Hurd. All right, um, any questions or council, or from the council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, council, that's great.
When is that expected to be done?
The outside will be done in the next probably month and a half, and the, the inside will be done by the end of October, probably.
Okay, yeah, just before.
Yeah.
And as part of that, they're gonna do some very, um, very detailed measurements?
Yeah, they need to measure it, because you're putting a half inch lining around how much is that, all the size of the tank.
Yeah, that's the whole bit, right?
And this will really help me with EPA as well.
Yes, that will really help us with the EPA, so. All right, wonderful, thank you very much. All right, moving on, next item on the agenda is matters from the mayor and council, so typically, um, for the folks that are here, um, from the public, we don't do public comments during our work session, um, we do public comments on, for items that are on the agenda. However, last night at the planning commission meeting, um, Mr. Horton and Mr. Christensen came, um, they have a concern about a single-family home permit that the town issued, and so last night I had mentioned, because Mr. Horton said he wanted to also bring those concerns to the council, that they could come and do that tonight, so, um, again, typically, we don't do that, but I did tell him that they could, and so we're gonna do that. Before, he has his comments, though, just for the council. So, this is a building permit, uh, that was, the Star Valley Ranch Association issued their approval for the home in, on March twenty-sixth of this year, and then the town followed on, I believe it was April twenty-first, issuing a single-family home permit. And this is for plat three, lot eighty-seven. It's a bit of a unique, uh, build, so currently, there's a foundation that's already in, and the home is a log home that is being moved onto the property. You may have seen some news articles about it, it's the log home that came down from Jackson. And so, we believe from issuing the permit, that it was sufficiently within code to do so, uh, the town does not enforce DCCNRs, and if there's any, um, difficulty with those, again, the association went ahead and gave their certificate of conformity to the town to be part of the permit package, so, except that was just a little background, because I'm not sure everybody was aware of that particular situation. So, Mr. Horton?
I want to thank you for making the exception for us to speak to you. Okay, um, before I start, I'd like to state that I'm gonna be quoting some IBC codes, and that information came directly from an IBC website, directly from the code, it wasn't from an old book or anything like that. When I state town ordinances, that what I'm stating is directly came from the website. I am aware of the statement that town website, the town ordinances may not be up to date on that, and I'm aware of that, okay? Okay? The log house, again, the log ha, mayor twain about the log house, that we'll be discussing is one that was involved in the rep on Highway twenty-two on June fifth. The log house is also the one that was parked across from the Wolf Den at the corner of Clark and Highway eighty-nine, if anybody ever saw that. The house also appears in an article in Jackson Hole News and Guide reported on June sixth, so I do have that arrow, if the board wants to see that. Okay? We have turned in two complaints filed with the town on this house, by plat three, lot eighty-seven. I will be discussing the second complaint, okay? Okay? After the first complaint was turned in, the mayor sent me an email, okay, so the typo in the email, let me know what happens, just, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna add, correct the typo, okay? This is from, directly from the email. Rather the permit issued from the log house, plat three, lot eighty-seven, is governed by the international existing building code, IEDC, that has also been adopted within our town code, especially the IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, addresses a relocation of moments of buildings. This is the correct statement, the IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, does address that, okay? The use of IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, the issuing of a permit for the log home, plat three, lot eighty-seven, under IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, in this case, is a violation of IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter one, scope and administration, section one oh two, applicability A, one oh two dot O, other laws. That state, that states, "The provision of this code shall not be deemed to nullify any provision of local code, state, or federal law. An ordinance is a law or decree by a municipality, a local law. As you should be aware, town ordinances supersede building codes. In other words, a town chooses the building code to follow, then writes town ordinances to change, modify, or delete parts of the building code. At this point, you ask yourself, what ordinance is the town trying to nullify? To nullify means to make invalid or ineffective. The town ordinance is one oh five point zero six zero. Building construction and site requirements, number one, all structural building materials shall be new. This ordinance section states that all structural materials shall be new material for all types of building construction in the town of Star Valley Ranch. This includes, but is not limited to, the following: residential homes, commercial buildings, storage sheds, garages, modular building, manufactured homes, any structure that is relocated on a lot within the town, et cetera. New materials for a structure to be moved into the town is no older than twelve months. That comes from modular homes and manufactured homes, okay? The reason for this ordinance section is to ensure that all structures, homes, buildings, modular homes, manufactured homes are new. This was written to kick out old structures, old homes, old, old buildings, old modular homes, and old manufactured homes. Ordinance one fifty point zero six zero, building construction and site requirements clearly state that all construction in the town shall use new structural materials. The log home at plat three, lot eighty-seven, is not constructed of all new structural building materials and is older than twelve months. Therefore, the log home cannot be relocated to the town of Star Valley Ranch under IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, because to do so is a violation of IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter one, A, one oh two, other laws, and town ordinance one oh five point zero six zero. Since the log home would be a violation of local law, ordinance one oh five point zero six zero, the town cannot use IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, to issue a permit to relocate the log house. A permit using IEDC twenty-twenty-one, chapter fourteen, to relocate the log home would be invalid. I was part of the team that drafted this section of the ordinance years ago when I sat on the D and Z board. The idea for all, is a very important point, the idea for all new materials started in nineteen seventy, when the first DCCRs were written and established. It continued with the forming of the town in the original town code and ordinances, and it is still in the town ordinances today. You ask yourself, well, new building materials, you ask yourself, what does all new structural building materials mean? New structural building materials, when you buy new structural building materials from a vendor or supplier like Home Depot, Lowe, Jenkins, Fall Ready, the material is considered new. The log, you ask yourself about log homes. Logs supplied from a log home manufactured, being from a kit or from a custom home, is considered to be new at the time of purchase. In the case of a custom home, it is a responsibility of the contractor and builder to follow the town of Star Valley Ranch's ordinances. Modular homes, manufactured and mobile homes, will be permitted the same as a new onsite built house, and shall be manufactured. and shall be manufactured no more than 12 months prior to the date of application. The intent behind ordinance, Section 105.060, is to ensure that all structures, houses, buildings, modular homes, and manufacturers are new. This includes, but is not limited to, the following: residential homes, commercial homes, storage sheds, garages, modular homes, manufactured homes, and any structure that is relocated onto a lot. As I've mentioned before, I was one of the people that redid that ordinance. There are also other members that are still in this town today that were part of that team and on town council at that time. So if you wanted to speak to them, those names could be provided. Now, since I made that statement about new material being used, you know, started back in the 1970s with the DCCRs. Want to talk about DCCRs, okay? You were thinking that it's not the responsibility of the town to enforce DCCRs. I agree with that 100%, okay? There needs to be a working relationship between the town and the association to prevent a permit being used issued by one and not issued by the other. This relationship is of trust. You know, this is the talking back and forth, making sure that all the requirements are met, both by the association, both by the town for their ordinances. In the email from the mayor that I referenced before, while the town does not enforce DCCRs, the Star Valley Ranch Association has also issued a certificate of conformance for this house, which is now included as part of our building permit file. We learned in the planning meeting yesterday, June 27th, that the certificate of conformance stated the log home was in compliance with the DCCRs. Okay, I forgot to bring my charge of all the DCCRs together and everything else. But if you were to look in the DCR, the following statement I'm about to tell you has not had any mod, it's consistent. Every one of the DCRs say the same thing. Okay, if you want me to read the whole thing, I will, it's a paragraph, but I'm just right now planning on reading what's, what's pertinent.
And just, Mr. Horton, so the DCCRs really don't have any bearing on the town and the permits that we issue, so.
Yes, the point I'm making, Mayor, is that the association issued you a compliance certification saying that it met all the DCCRs. I'm pointing out to the council that is inaccurate, invalid, certification, certificate that you received from the town. It was in error. And because of this error, because I believe from us talking, that in your process, if the association had told you this does not conform with the DCCRs, you would have not issued a building permit. I'm correct me if I'm wrong in your process.
That's actually incorrect, because the town will, we will not hold up issuing a single-family home permit, waiting for the association's COC. So, we won't wait for the association's certificate of conformity. We like them to give it to us, but it is not a requirement for us to issue a permit. So again, we're, we try to work with them, and this certificate of conformity process is something that came that the town and the association developed together earlier this year, just so that we can all stay on the same page. But I do appreciate you, you know, pointing out that you don't think they're, they follow their own rules, so.
Yes, yes.
So I'm gonna ask the council now if you have any questions for Mr. Horton, or any questions for Mr. Kazir in the back there about any of this.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
I'm sorry, please be patient, I'm sorry. Okay. If what we're asking you to do later on, if a variance came along in your variance code 154.083, there are, in standards, there are A through J, A through F, that has to be a yes, a yes vote.
Right, and I just wanna, so let me point out here that the process for issuing building permits has changed from what it was when the Planning and Zoning Board used to be the one that approved building permits. So as of the beginning of this year, that is not the function of what is now called the Planning Commission. All building permits are approved by the town building official.
Yes.
For this particular property and house we're talking about, there's no, currently no variance. And we don't anticipate getting a variance, because it doesn't really qualify for a variance.
Okay.
But you are correct with the process you were gonna read, which the Planning Commission would have to go through and make sure every single one of those conditions were met before recommending to approve it, so. But in this instance, there is not a variance to consider.
Okay, so what we're asking tonight is we're requesting that a stock notice be issued and the building permit be revoked, because the following town ordinances are in violation, that I quoted before. The houses, A, the house is not constructed of all new material, therefore the log home doesn't meet building standards stated in ordinance 105.060. B, the town do not use IEDC 2021, Chapter 14, to relocate the house, because to do so would be a violation of IEDC 2021, Chapter 1, 102, other laws. That's the provision for nullifying, the provision of this code shall not be deemed to nullify any provision of state, local, or federal laws. The nullification of the local law, the ordinance would be 105.060. Okay, so that's what we're asking for tonight. And what we're asking for, if, if you guys decide not to, not to issue a stock notice and not to revoke the permit, I would be asking for time on your next town council meeting. As an agenda, I would discuss this, so the public.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you going, walking through it again here with the council. So there's no decision before the council to revoke this permit or to make any decision on it. It has been issued by the town. We're gonna address your complaint, the second complaint that came in, and we will be sending a response to that. But there won't be any decision out of the council this evening about it. So just wanted to make that clear, that's not part of the council's function to revoke a permit. That would come, it'd be a recommendation from our building official to do that. And so, right now, we don't, that's not on the table either, so.
So the stock notice that was issued, is that still in effect, or has that been taken away?
We did have him on hold to review, and then we reviewed it, and we gave him a go ahead, continue. Okay, that's what we do.
So.
Based on that, I would like to be put on the agenda for the, for the town council next council meeting, so that I can present this, so the public can be aware of it.
So you can, there's a public comment section during the regular town council meeting, so you can definitely, if you would like to bring it up. There is a time limit of three minutes for public comment during the regular meeting.
That's why I'm asking for it to be put on the agenda, because this information cannot be presented in three minutes. Now, I can shorten this if the town council wants me to, I can cut it down to a more reasonable time. The three minutes will not give me the time to present this in the length that it needs to be, so the public can understand what is in violation here.
Okay, well, I think the best forum would be public comment at the regular meeting. Those are much more well-attended than our usual work sessions that we have. I'm, we haven't developed the agenda for the upcoming work session, but I'll take it into consideration to add it, and then I'll let you know if it's on there, and otherwise, I think the public comment forum is gonna be the best avenue for making more people aware of your concerns. So again, we've, when the permit was issued, the town felt that it was sufficiently within the code. There's a new foundation, there's gonna be a new garage, driveway's been inspected, inspections are ongoing. Mr. Kazir is, you know, doing a really good job and staying on top of this one. So, but I, again, I really appreciate your concerns and all the thorough research going into it, and, you know, based on last night and our conversation, I, you know, appreciate you wanting to come and let the council know of your concerns as well, so. So I'm gonna go ahead and close that particular topic out. And then there's one more, I know we're in matters from the mayor and council. Mr. Sommerfeld, you had a quick comment you wanted to make, and we're gonna, there's an agenda item for the council that we're gonna put on for the next work session, and if you could just tell them what it's gonna be.
Mayor, what we're, I live in Sunrise Mountain Estates, and some of the owners are with us here tonight. And what we're gonna be asking the town to do is install a fire hydrant down at the corner of Sunrise Mountain Place and Hardman Road, so we have better access, should we need it. Our subdivision, to fight a fire, the fire department would drop tanks. And then they would have a truck, tank truck, shuttle back and forth to the nearest fire hydrant to fill those tanks to continue fighting the fire. Our closest fire hydrant is at 1601 Hardman Street, which is around the corner and down to the west from us. And I can certainly envision circumstances where there may be a fire that would prohibit the tanker truck from getting to that fire hydrant. So we'll be back when we are able to come on an agenda item and present our concerns a little bit more fully.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sommerfeld. Alright, Councilman Merrill, anything? Councilman Toolson?
No.
Councilman Ellis? Councilman Bitter?
No, but just to let the council know, I'm drafting a capital contingency thing that we can all work towards to come up with something that, that will work for us going down in the future.
Okay, I appreciate that. I do not have anything else, so with, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move, go ahead. I'm always here.
And a second.
A second.
And second by Councilman Toolson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.